We're live. Okay, so the ad hoc special real estate committee is now convened in open session. And the first order of business in open session is a motion to seal the executive session minutes. May I have a motion that the minutes of the committee's September 11th executive session be sealed?
So move second.
Thank you, Bahid, Armand, Mike. Okay, great. Vivian, no discussion, ask for a voice vote, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Any note, any additions? Okay, the motion is approved. We will now, because we amended the agenda, go into the action item to consideration of the comprehensive campus plan and recommendations for approval to the University of Rhode Island Board of Trustees. And I'm referring this President Abby President to provide an explanation of this agenda item to make that presentation. Thank you.
Before we do that, I just want to explain for any members of the public who are joining on the live stream that we had a vote to move the executive session to the beginning of the agenda. And that is why the live stream is now just beginning with our open session.
Great, so I'm really, really pleased to give some just very brief remarks on the comprehensive campus plan that we bring to the committee today for recommended approval to the Board of Trustees. This has been a culmination of over a year's worth of effort on the part of many people on the campus. But I specifically want to call out our Associate VP for Facilities Carl Calvo and his team, Ryan Carrillo, Director for Planning and Real Estate Development. We've got Catherine Kittredge, who I think was on, I'm not sure if she's here, there she is Catherine. So Catherine is in our design group and also Dulcie Olin-France, who is in our real estate team, just working extensively hard with the campus to make sure that we had input and feedback reflected. I also want to thank the board for their support of this effort and frankly, for sort of pushing us to get this plan completed. And of course, thank the president and the provost for their support. I am going to turn it over to our consultants Tyler Patrick from Sasaki, who you've heard from before, and also Jacob Knowles from BR Place, who are undergoing our Energy Master Plan. You should have in your enclosures, a presentation that we'll walk through today, but also the full plan itself. So I've asked Tyler, where possible, the sort of, you've seen a lot of this before. So focus a little bit on the implementation approach and the phased approach and actually the sort of cost of what the plan would be. But I know he's going to kind of walk through the the big ideas and then answer any questions you might have. So I'm going to turn it over to Tyler. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
And you can see my screen, correct?
Yes, and just a reminder Tyler, that the the meeting does end at 10:00. So because of our IT issues, we have a smaller amount of time. So thanks.
Yep. Thanks, Abby. Great. Thank you so much for for joining us today. As Abby said, I'm going to run through some of the material you've seen before at a relatively quick clip so that we can get to some of the new information that's at the end of the presentation. But just to start by way of introduction, I think we wanted to stress that this is really rooted in the university's strategic plan. And that provides the sort of guideposts for the recommendations that you see within this initiative. And so, you know, our four strategic priorities and those actually dovetail quite nicely into our planning principles, which are the sort of longstanding tenants that will govern the plan moving forward. So this ensures flexibility as long as we are evaluating projects and potential investments relative to these principles. I think this is really the the spirit behind a lot of the capital planning recommendations you see in the plan. We have several big ideas that that we've talked about before, but I want to run through them. The first is really about thinking about the whole ecosystem of our URI campuses and improving connectivity. That's both physical connectivity and programmatic connectivity across the entire university, regardless of our presence in Kingston, Providence, the Bay Campus, Alton Jones. The next one is around enhancing pedestrian connections and wayfinding. This is a really important initiative that has come about through a lot of our stakeholder sessions about improving accessibility, legibility of the campus environment, both from a sort of pedestrian walking standpoint, as well as the shuttles that serve the campus.
Excuse me, I'm Tyler. To the secretary, there appears to be a recording of the first half of the meeting playing in the background here. Can you correct that? Michelle? Michelle or Lynn, can you hear me?
Shall I proceed?
I think so.
Okay. I'm going to keep going in the interest of of time, but feel free to interrupt me. Promoting wellness wellness and an active campus. This is about both the sort of campus life programs and facilities that you see kind of highlighted in that pink on the screen, but also the series of trails and pedestrian paths that extend from the Northwoods all throughout the sort of Ellery Pond ecosystem. Next is distributing housing across the campus for a more connected community. Housing is a critical programmatic element that had been studied prior as part of the housing and dining plan. Those recommendations have been brought forward and integrated into this plan. This looks at housing for a variety of different populations, our undergraduates, our graduates, students as well. And engaging and collaborating to support thriving neighborhoods. This is really thinking about enhancing connections to the Kingston civic spaces and strengthening the quality and variety of campus adjacent amenities and thinking about this opportunity to really create a sort of front door for the campus. And then integrating environmental stewardship. This is something Jacob's going to talk a little bit more about at the end of the meeting. But just that this is really integral to how we've conceived every each and every project, thinking about it not only as it relates to specific facilities, but also the the wetlands, the forest, the farmland as a land-grant university and a sea-grant university, preserving those natural assets. And then at the Bay Campus, really supporting the blue economy, which is a key part of the strategic plan. So just kind of walking through the Kingston campus framework in just a little bit more detail. Again, you've seen aspects of this before, but the plan advocates for both renovation and new construction over time, as well as investments in the sort of public realm, whether that be Ellery Pond itself or the campus open spaces, new greenways, et cetera. And so that real balance between both indoor and outdoor environments to create a more active campus to support URI strategic needs. Programmatically, while the plan is flexible, we have allocated where we think different programmatic elements with the neighborhoods in which they should land. Essentially, after all is said and done, we're achieving nearly 3 million additional gross square feet of net new space potential, which is in over and above the 5 million or so that you have on campus today. And of course, a lot of this, everything that you see in a hatching is some of our renovation opportunities. Delving into the districts themselves, one of the signature aspects of the plan is the central residential district, which really expands on the residential core and creates not only new housing for undergraduate students, but also a central greenway that provides the sort of anchoring open space element for this district, as well as pedestrianized streets such as Butterfield that create a more sort of living, walking, working dynamic to support this district. And so a number of projects, not only housing, but also development of the Student Health and Counseling Center in this district, as well as a number of sort of renovations such as to the Memorial Union. And this just gives you a sense of what Butterfield Road could look like over the long term with a sort of pedestrianization with the the ground floors of those residential buildings opening onto this very active corridor. Shifting to the North Academic District, again, this is where we're seeing a lot of opportunity for academic investment in the future. We know about the the development of the near-term biomedical sciences building. There's also a lot of opportunity for the expansion of the health sciences with the new integrated health building, as well as renovations to White Hall. We're showing opportunity if a medical school should move forward. You know, how that could land and as well as sort of flexibly demonstrating where additional academic infill could find its way into the North Academic District. And then lastly, the Historic Quad District, this is really about sensitive infill. The Historic Quad gets a lot of place making identity to URI. And so we want to be, you know, very cognizant of that. So a lot of what you see here in that lighter pink such as East Hall and Memorial Union is the sort of lighter lighter touch in terms of renovation and then just strategic infill such as the Student Success Center. You can see that notion of the hotel and the mixed use along Upper College Drive that kind of frames that the edge of that district as well. A lot of the projects in the in the campus plan advocate for mobility, landscape and stormwater management. We know how critical Route 138 is into the image and identity and also the sort of edge condition of the university. And so we've studied ways to think about the integration of of our bus rapid transit, but also the the experience along that corridor to better enable it for pedestrian movement. So the addition of sidewalks and lighting and landscape will greatly improve the image and identity of that corridor. In terms of the landscape, again, balancing our farmlands, our natural areas such as the Northwoods, as well as our more formal landscape like the quadrangle and then the sort of signature expansion of a of a new greenway that marches down to the Ellery Pond and the wetland restoration there. And so that area is highlighted here. So you think you go from from the main quad. The the open space really not only provides a nice open space amenity, but also a more accessible route to traverse the campus east-west. As we know, this is quite steep topography. And so thinking about how we can do that through the design of the walkways and the spaces to make those pathways ADA accessible and promote the movement from east to west. And then again, talking about the Northwoods, this real opportunity to think about this not only as a place for sort of passive recreation, but a lot of research happens here as well. And so celebrating this as an amenity and making sure that the proposed and enhanced trails really enable folks to access this 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 treasured landscape area. And so you can see a possibility for use in a variety of different ways. And then I mentioned the accessibility that gets promoted through this. And so this is an image of the central sort of greenway that is marching down to the extent expansion of Ellery Pond. You can see this will create an amazing hub of student life and activity and space with the the new residence hall investment abutting it. And then closer to Ellery Pond, the idea of the wetland landscape, this doesn't have to be a hands-off sort of approach. It can be a way, a place where we actually engage with that landscape through strategic interventions here, as you see in these precedent images. And so here's an image of what that could look like along Ellery Pond, looking back up into the residential expansion. And then before we get into the implementation, just a few notes on the Bay Campus. This has been an area that has been receiving a lot of of study as well. So the development of new classrooms, expanded research, also opportunities to enhance student life here, facilities for recreation and beach access. And we've always been thinking about how do we maximize the views and enhance the connections to the water here? Some of the community industry partnership opportunities can really welcome people to this campus and and even opportunities for industry partnership and even potentially short-term housing. So we've looked at the developable zones of the campus, those areas that are not in wetland areas that could be developed for the long term. There is a lot of long-term capacity that is offered at the Bay Campus. What you see on the plan here is in this sort of dark blue are facilities that we know of or that are are planned projects. The hatching relates to renovation and then those zones that are patches in this sort of, you know, turquoise, blue, aqua blue colors show areas that could be developed over time. So we have a lot of potential here over the long term. So as I wrap up my section before I hand over to Jacob, I want to talk a little bit about implementation. This is a flexible framework plan to support ongoing investment. We've taken our best attempt at understanding the sequence of projects and bundled them accordingly. So you see here, projects in the zero to five years are shown in red. A solid red is new construction and a hatching is renovation, followed by six to 10, 11 to 20 and 20 in that 20-plus years in the darker blue. This is not meant to be overly prescriptive, but it is our best guess today on the sequence of projects when enabling projects need to happen to support the the future development. We've also engaged in a series of cost estimates, which are, you know, provided also in in detail in the appendix to the report. The total estimated costs are over a 20-year period and they're in $20, $25, so they are not escalated at this time. Where the projects that were providing providing here are including the gross square footage, the construction costs and the soft costs we anticipate. And we've organized them by new construction, renovation, demolition, as well as those mobility, landscape and utility projects. The costs are rough order of magnitude, so I just want to stress that. And the anticipated project phasing is subject to change, as as I mentioned there. One thing to note, when Jacob talks about the Energy Master Plan is that we're assuming electrification as the baseline for all new construction in these. And so, but the cost of the ground source heat pumps and geothermal infrastructure is estimated separately within the Energy Master Plan, which which Jacob will cover. Upgrades to the MEP systems in are noted only in the buildings that we've tagged for renovation because of a programmatic renovation. And so just so you understand what the costs are tracking. So we obviously can't go through each and every project here in terms of the cost, but just to note the sort of rigorous approach to the new construction that you see here, the renovation projects that are noted, demolition projects that enable, a lot of which enables the new construction. And then finally, mobility, landscape and utility. So we are approaching $5.3 billion in in today's $20, $25 over the course of the 20-year period. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Jacob, who's going to talk through the next four slides and then we'll wrap up for questions.
Thanks Tyler. So we go to the next slide. The state of Rhode Island has set some very aggressive targets for reduction in carbon emissions, both in terms of the long term of hitting carbon neutral by 2050. And as you can see in the black lines that step down through both of those charts on the right-hand side, they have aggressive goals for reduction in emissions incrementally over time for 2030, for 2040, and then ultimately zero for 2050. And so the plan that we've developed is aligning with those targets is to achieve compliance with those goals. And one of the key factors here is URI is already running on renewable electricity. So that has been a great move that URI has already made, as well as other efficiency, energy efficiency measures. So that's why on that top chart on the right, you can see for the 2021 Act on Climate, you're already in compliance because that green, all those green bars are your renewable electricity, which is carbon neutral. The the orange below that is your remaining fossil fuel combustion on campus to heat your buildings and domestic hot water and other uses. That is our big challenge is that those orange bars and reducing your onsite combustion of fossil fuels. You can see, for example, on the second chart with the executive order, the lead by example rule for 2306, that there is a period between 2030 and 2034 where as fast as we are trying to push and achieve compliance, there's a period where you'll be a little bit above the limit. Because some of that, those investments just can't really reasonably happen fast enough. But overall, getting back into alignment by 2035 and then continuing in alignment through the end of 2050 to be carbon neutral. So to achieve compliance with all these goals, we've outlined a plan, which actually nicely mirrors the overall campus plan using a district-based approach. And the reason that we ultimately selected this option after doing a lot of analysis and a lot of different scenario testing is this option gives you the most flexibility to implement over time and invest incrementally as you're able to on a project by project or district by district basis. So those the four districts are the athletic district on the left in green, the residential district in the middle in yellow, the North Academic District in blue and the Historic Quad District in the reddish color there. And so each of those districts are approaching decarbonization or eliminating fossil fuel combustion in different ways, tuned to be the most cost-effective and most flexible option for each of those districts as you move towards carbon neutral overall. So some of the key takeaways is yes, there is a path to comply with the state mandates with the asterisk that there'll be, you know, some bumps in the road, but you'll ultimately be overall in alignment. A key factor to achieve that is electrifying your existing infrastructure and buildings that currently burn fossil fuels. Because once you transition to electricity, then you are able to run off of your renewable energy that's already being sourced. So that will be carbon neutral. We do rely on ground source or geothermal as part of the design for certain districts of the strategy on the campus. But overall, there will be a significant increase in the electricity demand and electricity actual load at a peak load condition for the campus. So there needs to be discussions with Rhode Island Electric to plan for that increased demand for to serve the campus with more utility power. 32050, Tyler mentioned that the CCP, the campus plan is projecting $5.3 billion in overall spend. You had previously done an overall assessment of your deferred maintenance costs at 0.9 billion. And then in addition, the Energy Master Plan to achieve compliance is targeting roughly $1 billion in additional costs. So in total, that's $7.3 billion over the next 25 years. So some of the, you know, urgent priorities in the near term include discussions with Rhode Island Electric to plan for the additional power that you're going to need. And then particularly for any new capital projects, any major renovations, any new construction, those you definitely need to align with the decarb plan. Otherwise, you're essentially creating more challenges that you'd have to go back and fix later. So this last slide just represents that some of all of the different costs. So in orange, you can see the comprehensive campus plan. Those are the new construction renovation type projects. In yellow, you can see deferred maintenance, that's just replacing existing equipment at end of life to keep your buildings running. And then in blue, you have the additional Energy Master Plan costs for decarbonization. Those are set up in increments over time. And then you can see the total over that's overall time period on the right-hand side stacked as a total.
Great. So at this point, we have just a few minutes left for questions, but would love to entertain any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Tyler. Why don't we take down the the slides so we can?
Yeah, my technology is challenged. I don't know if I could do that. I'm going to do my best to try and do that, but I always have trouble in WebEx trying to do that. So.
Thank you very much. So open the, we only have a few minutes left. Are there any questions that we can address?
No questions. Well, we provided a lot of materials. So obviously, if any of the board members have questions that they want to ask after this, we're open to it and also open to sharing this, the board. If there's a desire to go through this, or we can just take questions offline. So.
Can we go back to the one on the screen? Whatever. Take the picture down.
Mike, did you?
Sorry.
I just want to point out this chart here. This, Ryan, it's not practical. The wobbly of deferred maintenance, we're going to have new deferred maintenance on the buildings we've built that is zero to five. So it's never going to be zero for these after that.
Yeah. So actually, Mike, I can address that. So the building assessment that we did only took into account a zero to 20-year period, which is why the greater than 20-year period doesn't show a deferred maintenance number. I'm glad you pointed that out. So it's not that we expect there to be zero deferred maintenance, it's that we hadn't analyzed and been able to give you a a number that has, you know, been been thoughtfully considered. So.
Right. It's going to be more than that post 20 years, that's what I'm saying. So.
Understood.
And then one of the things, Margot, you mentioned you had this plan, I think, earlier. One of the things that we've been stressing is prioritization and putting some economics that this is a, this is really dictated by Mark and the board, how we want to allocate. To me, what stands out is housing has to be, as we are doing, rapidly accelerated and finished. And that third place, whatever you want to call it, really is a priority. So we have, I think, as a board, Margot, I don't know what your plan is. We need to, we need to really focus in on those priorities. But to me, those standout is absolutely necessary. And then there's a lot of more discretionary items I think that we could do over time.
Yeah, I mean, I I think, first of all, I think the plan is is was really helpful. And I, as I mentioned, I read the whole plan, which really helped ground me and like, where are we? And understanding what we have today and what what the short and long-term vision could look like. So I thought it was super helpful. But the big issue here is going to be how do we, how do we prioritize? What's our budget? How do we actually narrow this down so that it is an actionable plan? Right now, it's, in essence, it's not really actionable because we don't, we don't have a agreement on, you know, what the steps are, what the long-term, do we agree with the long-term vision? Do we agree with the planning? Do we have the 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 right funding? So I think, Abby, you're not hearing a lot of questions because it's a lot of information to synthesize. And and then, and then really what the next step is, is to narrow down, how do we execute on this plan? So I'd be open to how others feel, but I I would think a next step here is for, you know, led by you, Abby, but like, we've got to get a smaller group together that actually looks at what are the actionable steps? And then we understand financial implications and all towards what the long-term vision looks like. So I think there's there's a very sort of acute actionable next step here in figuring out what the priority looks like and then bringing that back to the board. But it's it's hard to, right now, you're just like looking at a very big, long-term vision, which is great, that'll ground us. But I think the next actionable step is, how do we prioritize? And then, you know, how do we lay that out for the board?
Yeah, and and I do think we have, because we have this requirement to submit a five-year capital improvement plan to the state that gets approved by the board, I think that's a good built-in mechanism. We have a bunch of, you know, we have a process internally to get ideas and prioritization of projects up through the campus leadership and then to the board for discussion and review. So that's, I think, the mechanism, but we do need to have some working groups just looking specifically at what we're going to put in the capital plan and what the financing is and what the financing opportunities are and partnership opportunities. So, you know, that's, that's the next step. But we have the menu. Now we have to actually prioritize the menu. But.
So Abby and the team, I'll just say one thing. And and I did look through the slides of the presentation on a plane yesterday. So and I thought, I know you didn't get any questions, I thought it was well-prepared, holistically speaking, well-prepared, well-presented, and it was very good, right? So so the team realizes the feedback. And I do agree with now the details and the details on how we get there. So but I thought it was well put together. So thank you.
Thanks so much.
I do think we need marks for you too on how to, what he feels like he's a, because he's, you know, what the strategic plan is. Certainly over the next five to 10 years, we really need to nail that down, I think.
So what are we voting on today?
So what are we voting on today?
So I don't know if Michelle has the script, but it is actually a an action vote. We're seeking your recommended approval to the board of the Conference of Campus Plan. Do you have that language in front of you?
Exactly. There were no further questions. May I have a motion to recommend that the board approve the 2025 comprehensive campus plan as presented in the enclosure?
I guess so moved.
Thank you, Fahid. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Armin. Ask for a voice vote. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, extensions? Okay.
So basically, we are voting and there could be additional discussion at the board, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Good.
Yes. Thank you. The motion is approved. The last agenda item before we adjourn is approval of the minutes of the April 8, 2025 Ad Hoc Special Real Estate Committee Meeting. They have a motion that you approve. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second. Mike, can it?
Thank Mike. Any discussion? There being no discussion, ask for a voice vote. All in favor?
Yes. Yes.
Any opposed, extensions? Okay, the motion to approve the minutes is approved. Final agenda item. Adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, the the motion to adjourn is approved.
I didn't think, I don't think you called for a vote, Michelle.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
May I have a motion to?
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you.